Call this an order, is that right?
That would make sense.
Order. I guess the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is everybody okay with the agenda? Anything they want to add? Under general business. I went back and looked at the minutes from the other one. I didn't know if we need to specifically address the sign ordinance changes.
The way we left it on that, J.C. did his quarterly board report. I want to say maybe October. And after he gave the report of the thoughts on the sign ordinance, the mayor said that he wanted the council to take a look at it before the planning and zoning board.
Maybe we can come back to that because I think that was something Kim brought up as well at the meeting was that when we left this at the last zoning meeting, the request was made to simplify the language in it. I don't know if that occurred or not. If it did, it wasn't brought back to the planning and zoning that I recall.
No, and I think between city attorney Mora and Mr. Serna, our code, our planner, they're taking that into account and see what they do to simplify it. It may just be removing things that we don't have. In my mind, I was thinking, we have a lot in there about commercial. And I think Randy's intention was just to cover everything if it ever did come up.
And I think what Kim was after and where we ended up with at the last meeting was, yeah, there was a lot of superfluous language in there that we wanted to make it a little bit more reader friendly for those of us who aren't legal experts.
Right.
So that you could carefully explain or easily explain to somebody if they walked in looking for a permit. Here's what you need to know.
Yes.
And you can't get that easily out of the way it's written right now.
Yeah, no, you gotta go through it a couple of times and understand how it's put together.
So is that a dead issue now for the zone planning and zoning?
Yeah, so at this point it is because the council is going to review it before it comes back here for recommendation.
You also made a comment that you wanted to bring back to the planning and zoning pool height, a discussion about pool height restriction.
Yes, and then we have that in the... No, we did not get that in this ordinance. This ordinance, we're planning on bringing that, but we wanted to cover this one because this one has the lookback period and it's all zoning. So everything that we talked about in our reviews with the council that is less restrictive, we incorporated for zoning, and that's what we're looking at today.
So is pool height a dead issue then?
Um, the pool height, they left that at, between planner Serna and myself, coming back with our recommendation for consideration.
Then there's nothing that planning and zoning needs to do with it at this point?
At this point, yes.
And then another question was, how many members do we need on this? We need five?
Five full, yeah.
So do we have enough to even make recommendations?
Yeah, three for a corner.
Three, so it's okay?
Yes.
I wasn't sure with the way things were changing and kind of the discussions that came back. Might be nice.
Yeah.
All right. Lastly, we used to get copies of this before the meeting.
I sent them out electronically. I believe, I thought, I included a note that if you wanted me to print you hard copies, that I would.
I did that too. We're automatic, I'd like mine automatically delivered, y'all.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, if we could, that'd be great. Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I approve. Second.
Before we move forward, Vice Chairman, can we have a roll call, please, for the record so we know who's present? Thank you.
Board member Angela Berry.
Here.
Board member Brenda Buenosera.
Here.
Board member Hart McIntyre.
Here.
City manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
City attorney Jeremy Simon.
Here. Thank you.
Okay, next is approval of the planning and meeting minutes from June 14th of last year. So we do have a form. Did anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes? And that covers some of my questions. Any questions over here? Okay.
No.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? All those in favor? So now, the next item was review draft of code chapter 94. For me, I was confused by this because it says 24 up here.
We do have one more. I don't know if you received the revised agenda. It's to appoint a chairperson.
I was skipping over that one on purpose.
That would be you.
I was gonna ask, does anybody want to be chairperson?
Right.
Oh, you guys already talked about that.
Well, no, we're saying it right now.
So do we have nominations? Anybody would like to nominate?
I'll nominate you.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, but I want to say something about it.
We're listening.
What's that?
We're listening.
When I first got on here, I felt like we kinda, and I said something to J.C. about it, I felt like we were kinda just rubber stamping stuff that was coming through here. And I'm not an attorney, and I'm not a city planner, and I'm not a developer, I'm a business guy. There's a lot of stuff that comes on here that I gotta say, I don't feel qualified to really say, yeah, this is the right thing. All I can do is look at it practically, and I kinda feel that's what we're here for, is to look at it as the homeowners who go, gosh, does this even make sense for us? And then let the legal guys and the city manager and the planners and all the people that are really in the know about this stuff, they're the ones that have to work through all the gobbledygook. So are you guys comfortable with that? Because I don't want to attack this from a constitutional position or whether it's written properly, it either makes sense or it doesn't.
That's right.
Is that fair?
Yeah, I think that's a fair assessment.
But I think we also have to give it then some due diligence when we go through so we're really going back to the council with a firm understanding of what we're agreeing and saying, yeah, we accept this or we recommend it.
I agree.
All right.
I mean, we're both nurses, so you know, you give us a disease and we're all over it, but we don't. I mean, so we're just like you.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Okay, so now we'll have a vote. There's a motion on the floor, and all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
So motion passes. All righty, so is the next thing to go over this ordinance, I believe? Yeah?
Yes.
And thanks for keeping me in order on this. Ordinance number 24, is that, that means chapter 94 of ordinance 24, right?
Well, 24 is just the starting of the ordinance number. It'll be assigned to the remainder of the number when it's officially going to council.
Okay. Do you guys have any general comments about this at all?
Do you want me to just run over some of the changes that this covers?
Yes.
Yeah. Went over the top here, and that kinda talks about the general changes, right?
Yes. And these are all less restrictive, so it's easing up on some of the code that existed.
Okay.
And that's why we can do it now as opposed to waiting all the way till October 1st.
One of the things I was gonna ask Randy, and to me it was a little bit confusing. I just want to understand the process here. It says, whereas planning and zoning has, or has held a hearing on this matter, that means this is after today's meeting.
Yes.
To the window, we didn't get to the 100. One of the things that I saw under definitions that I had a question, even though it's not a change, I had a question about it. On one hand, and this is talking about how we determine fair market value. To me, it was rather ambiguous when you talk about it unless you're talking about damage. Then it was very specific. It says, the value shall be the appraised value.
What page are you referring to?
I'm sorry, page two.
Page, okay.
94.2 definitions.
Thank you.
94-2 definitions, first paragraph, second paragraph. Substantial improvement means any repair. And one of the things is we're changing, we're saying, does it make sense to change this from five to one? And I think probably everybody, I'm guessing, would agree with that. Yeah. When we put the roof on, that's when I found out about this whole thing. At the time, the value of the house really brought it close to value that was on record here. So when I had an appraisal done, then it was no problem. The five-year, I'm going, why would we restrict ourselves like that? If somebody wants to make their house better and it had value to it, why have such long look-back times? Good that we're doing it one year.
Was this the insurance issue that we're talking about in the meeting? The FEMA, the 50%?
This is, yeah, so the 50%, which was the substantial damage improvement, that always is going to apply. This is covering the section of code that said of a five-year lookback period. And in our code, the way it was worded was only applying to the substantial improvement, not substantial damage. This is, made more sense, I should say, because this is more from floodplain management, you know, strategy as far as to try not to allow phasing where people have put tons of improvements on structures that are below the flood line. But it also was, made a little more sense when we were back on the old rating system, which used to grandfather in the people who were pre-firms, so pre-map that were built before they even created the maps. It allowed them to have a discounted grandfather rate for being at that level. So now it's like, they've come out with risk rating 2.0, which is a much more elaborate rating system that is supposed to make it more actual risk costs, and they've done away with the grandfathering. So everybody who's sitting slab on grade is on a climb yearly of, I think it's maximum 17% until they reach full rating. That's significant. So their insurance is raising by a lot. And in a matter of years, they will be at what it would cost if you were allowed to build a house around slab on grade, what it would cost to insure it, which is a lot. So given the situation we're in now, it's kinda, I mean, from a floodplain management standpoint, you're always trying to mitigate and reduce the cost of what a flood could damage. But if you look at it from the homeowner's situation, either people don't have their insurance policies anymore because they've gotten so expensive, or they do, and they, you know, if they do improvements and they have more to insure, that's gonna make their insurance go up too, so they're paying for it. So it's kinda like, does this make sense anymore in our situation? And we kind of discussed that in our work session.
Pretty much a whole different topic. My house is on grade, and we knew that when we bought it. And I said, okay, I said to the fellows, are you willing to walk home one day after a storm and know that everything in there is gonna be gone? I grew up here in Florida with hurricanes, so it's just, you wanna live on the beach, wanna live on the water. It's the thing, the flood insurance stuff is a pheasant. But, so this is asking us to go to one year?
Yes, this is taking it from five to one year. So what we would do from a process standpoint, when we get permits and are usually on markers when it's over $20,000, but we're always checking to see how much improvement has been done. We would have them sign, kinda like doing something proactively, have them sign an affidavit saying, I understand the 50% rule, and this is what my balance is, and this is how much I could do in the five-year time period. And we would track it. We put it in a system to track throughout that five-year period. This for us, you know, it goes down to one year. A lot of people's permits, because typically either, if you don't have a lookback period, it's permit to permit or event to event. A lot of cities, and this is why we're doing one year, have the one year. So that gives you an actual time period. But if, a lot of the permits, even remodel permits, they're open longer than a year. So if your permit is still open, it's still in effect per the like base flood code. So it'll be easier for us to track. We won't have to look back as far and keep maintaining like a spreadsheet of all the work done. So it won't affect staff too much. And one question that the mayor asked, if I thought the permits would come in, more permits because of this? I don't, I really don't think so. And I think if anything, it'll get a little bit easier to manage with less lookback period.
So then you get down about midway through this and it says, the fair market value shall be used during the five, or during the one-year period. But it doesn't define, at least unless I skipped over, it doesn't define how you're gonna get the fair market value like it does when you're down under damage. Damage says by an appraisal as opposed to a tax rule.
That's correct.
So should there be a definition in here?
So that definition is in the flood, the floodplain, chapter 74.
Okay.
So there's some areas of our code that are kinda spread out in different chapters. We want to, we'd like to get it more concise, I mean...
What is, what does the code say is the way to determine fair market value?
So the flood code, you have to go to the definition of fair market value. Okay. So under the definition, market value means the price at which a property will change hands between a willing buyer and a willing seller, neither party being under compulsion to buy or sell or both having reasonable knowledge of relevant facts. As used in this chapter, the term refers to market value of buildings and structures, excluding the land and other improvements on the parcel. Market value may be established by a qualified independent appraiser, actual cash value, replacement costs appreciated for age and quality of construction, or tax assessment value adjusted to an approximate market value by the factors provided by the property appraiser. So it gives you three options in the definition. This is the way our code reads for market value. So either you have a qualified appraiser determine it, or you have the, our actual cash value calculated, or you have the tax assessment factor, which you can get off the property appraiser website.
So then why do we have to define fair market value specifically in the case of damage? Why not still apply the code?
Because, like I said with this lookback period, they separated out, and this is the way I interpreted it, they separated it out so it's substantial improvement remodeling. They're saying you can only do, or drop to 50% in five years. And then they made the damage, so wherever you are at that point, you know, wherever your five-year balance for improvements are, if you're done with the improvements and the permit's closed, and you're still on that five-year lookback period for improvements, if a storm comes that season and damages the house where you're doing repairs, not upgrades, then it's saying, we're gonna have a substantial damage appraisal done, what the house was right prior to that, and that's how we're gonna apply it.
How does this play into the situation the gal brought up Monday night about the repairs she was doing? Was she caught in the five-year lookback or it had nothing to do with it?
This had nothing to do with the lookback period.
So this wouldn't affect?
Yeah.
Okay.
And does the one-year affect our FEMA rates?
It does not. I did do a little research when it was brought up, and we could have been in credit, which probably had been about 30 points for CRS. It wouldn't have made a difference. We did, we actually didn't get credit for this. That wasn't getting counted, but it's not a significant amount of points that's affecting anything. We're still gonna get our class six 20% discount per the CRS.
Okay, any other questions on page two? We're talking about fences on in 94-172. What about, are there fences, walls, et cetera, that were built higher than six feet, for example, that were there before the code was into place? What do you do in a situation where something was there before the code was modified?
Typically, it says it in the section of code if there's any kinda existing and how it's applied. Like for instance, our turf section, it says something about 10 years or when the turf is replaced. If it was already existing, wouldn't that have an effect? So with fences, I can tell you right now, I do not know of any fence anywhere in the city either district that's higher than six feet. This, the change in this was to allow the fence to extend over the seawall on both residential and multifamily. Well, my point was if you go to the multifamily properties, like 50% of them already have done it. So either we allow it or we tell them they can't do it. Yeah, the condominiums.
Condominiums. And they put fences?
Well, technically, it says they have to stop and not overgrow the seawall. But what I brought up was that a lot of people have their fences going over the seawall, mainly to prevent people from walking down the seawall on their property. So I was like, are we gonna allow it or are we gonna enforce it? And then we did the same on the residential side.
Anybody have any, I don't think there were any changes where they're on page three. I highlighted some things just for me, but three, page four, five.
Did you guys understand the setback change?
No.
The what?
On page three for 94-220?
No.
Okay, so this is right at the very top where it says, Bellerbeach First Edition, and it says lots one, two, and three. And then you go over and you look at side setback, and it's got 15 crossed out and down to seven. So this applies to really only one lot. Because the Bellerbeach First Edition lots one through four start at, let me pull them out. They start at Harbor, I believe it's 907 Harbor, which is the house that's directly south of the Swale. You know, at the Swale, the Bayside Park.
Yeah.
So that's the one, so that's the only house that has, which was a 15-foot side setback. Every other house, if you look through, is seven, 7.5, or 10.
So it's to the benefit of the homeowner?
It's to the benefit of that specific lot. And that homeowner called and inquired about it and brought up a good point in my mind, and I had the planner review it, and he didn't see any issues, was that lots two, three, and four are all Bayside Park. So those are open environmental space. We're not gonna develop them. He's the one, lot one of First Edition. So he's really the only residential property that is being held to a 15-foot setback, which is very, that's a big setback.
That's a big setback.
And his house is built with 15-foot setback. But what he's asking is, moving forward, can I have it reduced to seven like every other property on the south side of the city? And, you know, so that he can do the similar thing.
All right. Anything on page four? Page five? I kept making notes about grandfather because I see things in here that I'm thinking, are there homes that aren't currently needing some of these? And it was more a question, how do we treat those? Do you force them to come in, come up to code even if they've been that way for years and years and years?
So that, I plan on especially when it comes to hedges and vegetation in the front setback areas. When planner Serna and I make our recommendations to the council, they're gonna be based on the fact of what is existing and make sure it's clear of what exists, what are, it'll be, it could be technically more restrictive, we just didn't want to touch on that yet because there needs to be more discussion. But we want to lay it out that this is what we got. This is what we think is something that we could enforce. And then talk about getting to that point. Because if you look at a lot of houses...
There are homes that I've walked by that I know have hedges out front.
Yeah. Some people's come all the way to the ground. And that's 27 feet of right-of-way that they got hedges in.
Now, will they be able to keep the hedge, or if they do, they have to bring it down to three feet?
Well, we can adjust the code, this is where I'm at right now, to maybe make it four feet in the front setback if that's acceptable, to provide people to have legal plants in the front setback. Now, as far as the right-of-way, people have it in the right-of-way. We, the planner recommends that we don't, because it kinda goes out saying you're not supposed to put anything in the right-of-way, but obviously people do.
And it's taken out, it's very expensive to put it back in once utilities are done.
Yeah, but we're Bellerbeach, so a lot of times we put things back, especially with our construction, because it's the expectation of the residents. If this is county, they would pull your papers, they'd put a concrete apron and tell you, that's what you got.
Yeah.
But we're a little different. So I was thinking, when it comes to that, then we make it clear that the right-of-way is the city's property, and that at any time the city determines it to be a hazard or something, it needs to be removed. It can be removed. Just to not say you can put stuff there or not put stuff there, I mean, but just, they get known.
Sometimes it's not so much the height, it's how broad.
Right.
The bushes are, because you can be out walking on golf. You can get out walking on golf, and sometimes you can't walk, can't have two people side by side walking by because the bushes are hanging.
Yeah, that's a problem, yeah. And when it becomes like that, or when it becomes, someone's like, I can't see down the road and try to pull on my right-of-way. And that's where I've gotten involved and said, this is, we're asking you to at least do this that it's not a traffic hazard. And that's usually cutting back to give about four feet of view.
Okay, I have one more question, but I'm doing all the talking. Y'all have any questions?
No.
On section five, paragraph two. Can you explain that to me? This is on page five. Section five. Property bounded in whole or part by anybody at water. I had a hard time working my way through that one.
Oh, here it is.
And I will say, I've got a prejudiced perspective on this because the way our property is set up, we cross the street, and then we've got property at the very end of the canal. And you and I have had discussions about what can I do? I couldn't go through this and figure out what my limits are.
Right. I'm sorry, can you say it by the section? Are we still on 94?
It's amended, amend section 94-251.
Okay.
It said, this was section five. It says, section five, amended section 94-251, fences, walls, and hedges. It's on page five of our package that we got.
Oh, my God. So after it says, the following regulations shall apply to all fences, walls, and hedges within the city, and then it gets numbered one, two, three?
Yeah, and number two.
Oh, number two. Okay. Okay, so this is, it's basically saying any property...
And I'm not planning on doing this, but the way I'm reading this, technically, I could put a hedge up on the north and south side of our property and have it AP because it's not bound by water.
But you're, on your house property or the piece across the street?
Piece across the street. I'm not doing that, but I'm just, I was just looking at it and saying, all right, what are their pitfalls here?
I think that's a portion of property that is, since it's on the water.
But I don't have, I don't have any, I'm not blocking a view of anybody on either side, and there are sides to it. So the way this is reading, it looks like I could put up, again, I'm not gonna do that. I'm just trying to play devil's advocate. If I look at this, it looks to me like I could put up, what is it, eight feet? Yeah, eight feet. Shall not exceed a height of eight feet.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It doesn't.
And ours is very unusual, so I don't think we can write code to have a plan for every single situation out there.
And then the other argument is that you are adjacent to public property, which is another exception.
Yeah.
In there.
Okay.
So I guess if you wanted to, you could argue taking it from seawall to your, um, property line out to the right-of-way with a hedge.
Technically eight feet.
I don't think anything covers that.
No, that's, so I didn't know whether it, it, from a legal point of view, is that something?
That's something that gets, I, I.
Or is it just, it's?
No, I'll pass that along. I think it should be covered because there are, uh, what, three properties?
Uh, yeah, there's a, the, the difference is when you go down on, on Hydicus West to the next block.
Yeah.
You have a house that, there is a lot that comes up.
It comes right up too, yeah.
To this, whereas at mine, it's only public property.
Yeah.
And, and on the north side of it, my, my neighbor there, no big deal, they're already, they've got fence and stuff that's on our property. I don't, I don't really care.
Yeah.
But it just, again, thinking future, how do we avoid the problems? Just a point.
If you did do it, I don't know. Well, I mean, what do you think? Do you think, I mean, I don't know if anybody would really be bothered by it.
But I would, I wouldn't do it. I think it would look really, really awkward.
It would look weird.
I, you, and I've talked about it. The only reason I would put anything up is just to try to keep people off the sidewalk. But, but, but Broward Sheriff's been great about work.
Have they been watching it? Good, good, good.
Yeah, it's good.
But I'll break that up. We'll bring it up. That's a good point.
Yeah, all right, page six.
So, um, on number seven, page six, I have the same question you did about people being grandfathered. Is this something new or is this, has this always been this way about, uh, the pools? People with pools having to have a fence? I know we.
Yeah, that's county law too.
Okay.
Yeah, with the, with the pool, um, so that can't get access to it, yeah.
Again, I'll use an example of our place. We don't have, we're not, we're not a birdcage and we don't have a fence around a pool. But our whole backyard property is surrounded by a concrete wall. So that would qualify then in that example, even though it's not.
It's a fence.
It's a fence, yeah, but it's not in proximity to the pool.
Right.
But there's no way for a child to walk back and get to the pool.
Yeah, see, I, I didn't know anybody could do that without a fence. That's why I was asking, is this something that's new or is it old? Because.
I think that that's, it's been in there, but the birdcage is qualifies, um, as having like a, something blocking access to the pool.
I just know our insurance company would have a heart attack if we didn't have a fence, so I don't know who would do that.
It, it's interesting, in, in the waterfront, the, the seawall is actually considered a barrier. The water is considered the barrier. Like it's still coming up by boat. Page seven? What does fifteen mean? Page seven, fifteen?
Yeah, I put a question mark right there too. Does that mean that perpendicular to the property?
I don't understand what this is saying.
The vista of the water area from a waterfront property is perpendicular to the property line along the water from grade to a plan of six feet.
Why is this, what is the purpose?
The, the view of the water area from a waterfront property. I guess they wanna, they wanna make sure you can see the water from.
From your own house?
Yeah, from six feet up.
So, so everything, as you're looking from the back to the water, everything has to be clear?
From grade to, to six feet?
Yeah, okay.
I guess maybe you don't want somebody putting up like a giant bounce house or something in their backyard? That could, that could block the view. If anybody else has any insight, I'm gonna say bounce house because I've got four kids and it's the first thing that comes to mind.
Page eight, any questions? Comments? Surprise, surprise, burms.
Well, you had that question last time, number twenty-one.
At some point, that's gonna be something that, like, some, again, I'll use our, our lot because I'm constantly thinking about how do I mitigate the, the canal rising the way it does? Now, I can't put, I can't raise the earth on, on the seawall side because that could affect flow over the seawall. You know, if we, if you, if you look at water control and you look at Holland, and I'm going way out, Holland's done a great job of figuring out how to deal with having water above flood plain. I mean, they're experts at it. And they have gates that flip up or they build burms on their, their properties to protect the homes. And I'm, I'm thinking, okay, maybe it's not an issue right now, but twenty-five years down the road? And should we be looking that far forward? Do we really wanna restrict homeowners from not being able to put burms? Then it brings up the whole issue of the, the road level because you start screwing up water flow if you get your land too high for, for the, the, the road. Over Fort Lauderdale, they were dealing with that. And ultimately they were building up seawalls and the next thing they're gonna do is build up the roads.
Well, that's what's gonna have to happen eventually.
Yeah, and the seawalls are gonna, seawall heights are gonna have to come up. But it's, it's a long, drawn-out process. Why, why is there a restriction to the berm? Is it because of impact on roads?
I think it's just the impact of any other property. I think it is just afraid.
Because if it runs off yours, it's gotta go someplace.
And everybody being so low, that yeah, like you don't, unless you find a way to keep it all on your property to go to drain only to the road or to the seawall.
Okay. Uh, down on section ninety-four, two fifty-five, sub-paragraph D, remodeling, it's the last paragraph. Permits for remodeling show require certification of total value of labor or labor and material, including out-of-pocket cost. Should we exclude the cost of the appraisal though, specifically? I mean, why should that become part of the calculation? It says all out-of-pocket. But now you're forcing people to get an appraisal and you're gonna include that in the remodeling fee the way this is written.
I gotta check on the FEMA. I don't, it, permits, permit costs, and I believe the appraisal does not count as part of the project.
All right, it just doesn't say that here.
It just doesn't.
If, if you're a homeowner trying to figure out what you gotta declare.
Right. Yeah. I think what they're really trying to cover is just, you know.
Yeah.
Just buying the materials and provided by owner.
I, I get it, but it just, you know, I think about that and I go, all right, that's an out-of-pocket. It, why has that become a limit? Or when you're trying to prove you've got enough value in the, in, in the home? And you, here's your cap. And there may be people that are gonna take that right up to the cap and the cost of appraisal might go them over.
I think when we look at it that closely, um, it kinda goes outside the code. That's where it's like, okay, what do you have? What are you trying to do? Let me look through the substantial improvement book and, and then it's, that's how we assess it.
All right, fine, page nine? Anything on the business impact estimate? Okay, any other comments? Keep going, you know, okay. And so I guess we have to make a motion to approve to send this back to council. A motion.
We need to have a hearing first?
A hearing?
Do, do they have to hold a public hearing first on the draft ordinance? Like it stated in the ordinance?
When it just the.
They gotta make a recommendation and then, then we gotta go through the ordinance procedures for the first and second.
It says planning and zoning has held a hearing.
Yeah.
So is the hearing public or is it here?
Well, this is a public meeting.
So the, the hearing is qualified then?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have a motion to recommend that this package is okay for the council? Some words like that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Can we just state for the record that there's no, there's no, um, member of the public present for purposes of public comment? And now you can go ahead.
Can you get Tom back?
So now you can go ahead and, uh, and either approve or deny the motion.
We've got a motion that's seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, any general business?
I mean, our next meeting, I, I mean, hopefully we get some more applicants to be on this board. We need some positions filled.
I thought we would have ended up with at least two after Monday night if we'd only gotten.
I'll push them, all right, depending on how it goes.
Yeah.
I'm always trying to get board members. Um, and then, so the next meeting, I would, it, it's gonna be the next time we're drafting ordinances for the land development code. That's where we're at right now. And like I said with the sign.
What is that addressing? What does that do? Land development.
Oh, that's, that's a section of the code. If you go to our code, it, it kinda defines it, um, which is. It's kinda right after the charter and, and describing all the, um, the, uh, like the boards and the construction, but I'm trying to find it. There it is. All right, so it's, it's called sub-part B, land development code. It starts, um, from chapter seventy up. So I mean, I would check with Attorney Moore, uh, because I think there's some chapters that we're looking to make some changes in the earlier code that he might think would qualify, um, for land development. So I can't say flat out that the way this is organized that.
That's not what we went through last year with the advisor that came in from Anales County?
That was a comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. And that was good for us to update, you know, it's a.
How many of these codes do you anticipate going through here? Or is it just something that occurs annually and you pick a couple, two or three codes, four codes?
My plan is after we, you know, that we contracted the planner specifically to kinda do an overhaul, um, this upcoming work session is gonna be the last work session that we just kinda say what jumps out, um, from each council member and public. And then from there, um, you know, uh, the planners made all these notes and we're gonna go through and kinda between me and him, come up with the recommendations and then bring it back around for discussion um, in the form of an ordinance. Um, but I believe I'll have to check at that point if council just wants me to send our drafts to, to kinda get it on their radar. And then if they're okay with it, I'll probably just take it, um, to the planning, you know, the ones that need to, and then come back. But I'm not exactly sure, you know, I'll just see how it goes.
Has, are you aware of anybody's expressed interest in getting on planning and zoning? It's probably one of the most innocuous committees there is, I would imagine.
So I've talked to a few people and, and one of the questions they've asked, and I didn't know the answer, is can, can they attend remotely if they have to?
The way Attorney Moore has worded it is we wanna have a quorum in person. So in other boards and committees, if we have a physical quorum, we've had people attend remotely. But we try to make sure, same with the council, we have that physical presence of the quorum. So we'd have to have at least three.
Does the charter have to have five? Does he say we have to have five on the committee?
Yeah.
It says you have five regularly.
All right, so we're in the same kind of catch twenty-two that the council itself is, is in. If there's only three of us here and we don't get unanimous, nothing goes.
All right, yeah.
Do we have the ability to change the required head count on a committee? If, if, again, to the same problems that we're having on the council, if we can't get other people in, this could become a real stalemate.
Um, you know.
You could, yeah, um, it may have to go to referendum though, if you're, if you're amending your charter.
If I were a referendum, it would have to come down.
If you're amending your charter, yeah.
Yeah, I have people. What about my husband, if you're like, but because we're married, is that?
I don't, I'd have to, I'd have to ask Attorney Moore because he's more familiar with your code than I am. Uh, off the top of my head, I don't know and I don't wanna give you a bad answer.
Y'all know anybody that?
Well, the two people I spoke to asked if, if they couldn't physically make the meeting, could they do it remotely?
We could still end up with a quorum that way.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the way, we're gonna get five members as long as we can.
I mean, it's like during the summer, we're, we're out to be up in New Carolinas quite a bit, so.
I mean, it's not gonna change where, the same problem we're gonna have either way.
We're right up in Maggie.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'd say for now, yeah, like encourage them and if we got it.
If anybody you know that, that wants to get on here. And can we have more than five if we were that?
You can have two alternates.
Have two alternates.
Yeah, could they, they both expressed the same thing y'all did about travel.
We could do Zooms, but then what he's saying is without having three members present, we won't have a quorum. Won't be able to do, because you can't take a vote on, on electronic?
When you're on a Zoom call, you can't.
The way, the way Attorney Moore said it is that, based on his review, his recommendation is that we have a physical quorum. But if we do have a physical quorum, so we have three people in the room, then we can have the other two remote and they can vote.
Why though are we restricted at that point?
I think it's the interpretation of statute. I don't think there's anything that says otherwise.
It may just be a functional wall. I know during COVID, things were a bit different, but then a lot of those executive orders which permitted virtual appearances were rescinded. So, um, I'll, I'll bring it up to Attorney Moore and maybe he can, he can offer some insight.
Because they have already made plans to travel, just like y'all have plans, so they didn't want to commit something they couldn't be here.
They could be, I mean, the issue is whether or not we can get three people here at any one time.
Right.
And, and the odds go up if we do have a couple more people here.
Sure.
So if, if, if you do know anybody, um, you know.
Will everybody be back by October?
Yes.
Uh, it's fall cover change.
The end of October.
The end of October.
I mean, realistically, with the way we're doing the review.
If we plan far enough ahead, yeah.
I mean, that's really where we'd be looking to get everything for the regulations.
Sure.
Because outside of this, this is why we kinda push this forward because it's less restrictive. And at least we're getting this done now, but then we can really get planning for the future.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, that's the end of the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Need a motion?
Second.
You're, you motioning?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's get the heck out of here.